Y'all ready?
I'm ready. Are you ready?
I was ready till you made me laugh. If I laugh, I cough.
No one else coughed after.
So no one else can laugh, no laugh. These cough drops are dramatic. They're gonna kill me if I get this one in a gun, it's gonna be a cough drop.
You gotta go work it out.
Good evening, welcome to our December school board meeting. Uh, we'd like to welcome all of our visitors here in the audience or at home. Thank you for tuning in this evening. We're gonna start with our pledge of allegiance and our invocation, please stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is right. Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this opportunity to, uh, gather together, we thank you for the season of Christmas and the joy of giving and Thanksgiving of being thankful. And we just thank you that you might permeate your love entirely across this nation, also in the, in the world in the east, and, uh, also where there's fighting in the Ukraine, continue to bring those soldiers and their family comfort as they may not come home from the holidays. Also thank you, God, uh, for those with us in this audience who miss our moms and dads and other relatives that we've lost during the season. We just pray that you would, uh, bring comfort through Jesus and your blood, uh, to them. Now, God bless this meeting, this school board meeting. We thank you for this wonderful board and this great community and all the accomplishments that our young people and teachers are doing. We just thank you for all those good things, we have so much to be thankful for now. Bless this meeting, that everything done might be done to your glory, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right, do we have any registered speakers now? All right, Dr. Tally, you're gonna present to us our Teachers of the Year coming to school this evening.
Okay, this time a life-wide Teacher of the Year to come forth and stand and introduce yourselves to our audience and also the board, tell us, uh, what school you're from. And I'd also be curious to know how many years you have also in education. So if you've come right behind the podium, and again, uh, give us your name, your school, and, uh, how many years of education, and if it's a specific subject, what do you teach? But also be very interesting.
Um, I'm Danika Ortiz, I'm at Quinby Early Learning Center. I have been, um, in Martinsville City for five years and I've been a parent for eighteen years, so, um, twenty-three years altogether in education.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you guys wait on the side because we know we have to have a group. You know that, right? The gallery's not gonna let us leave the car.
Hi, good evening, I'm Jamie Ernest, I teach at Patrick Henry Elementary School, second grade. I'm in with Martinsville City, this is my eighth year, but working on my twenty-third overall in education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Melissa Albertson and I'm at Albert Harris Elementary. I've been a teacher for ten years. I was a, um, second grade teacher at Patrick Henry for seven years and I have been the reading specialist at Albert Harris for, uh, going into my fourth year.
Great.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Robert Ashby, I'm an eighth grade science teacher over at Martinsville Middle School and this is my sixth year in full-time education, before that I was in youth ministry for about ten years, so I've been working with kids for a long time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Abrams Thomas Harrison and I work at Martinsville High School. I teach English eleven and I've been at Martinsville for seven years.
Thank you. I'd like to say that these are representative of a Teacher of the Year and, uh, they will be selected, we will be selecting a District Teacher of the Year, but of course, all of these educators are outstanding, uh, people. Uh, we must have a select one to move further, uh, to the state competition and just Teacher of the Year for, for Virginia. And I'm very pleased, we're very pleased with the contingency of, of people we have, we'll find educators. And I wanna thank all of them for all the service, they love our children, they're so dedicated. And, uh, let's give them all a round of applause. I'd love the teachers to come along with the board and with faith and group pictures. Kelly, where do you want her?
Well, ideally I want you in front of that backdrop, everybody's gonna have to move their chairs. Yeah. It's like I'm gonna smoke my mom on this.
Go on, Julie.
We'll get the teachers in the middle and we'll be the working answer. Just as close as I can.
We didn't feel like we should.
We can see.
All right. Ready?
Nobody's blinking. Excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, uh, we will be announcing, uh, Teacher of the Year soon, basically goes to committee and the committee selection, they're gonna have a hard time, this is gonna be a hard choice. But we're very proud of you.
Okay. Next item is the Code Virginia Educator Spotlight. Is Ms. Witt with us?
She's not here.
That was part of our awards recognition, is that right?
Dr. Bryant here. This word's mine.
Can you tell us a little bit about the program or about your award?
Okay, well, we applied, Ms. Witt applied for this award about, um, a year ago and what it does, it focuses on coding in classrooms. Um, our children have been coding, um, they code from kindergarten onward up to fifth grade. And, um, Ms. Witt, um, has sponsored coding nights where the parents come in with the children and they code on the computers. So, um, it's been an intricate part of Albert Harris and we've been coding now for, well, I've been there about five years, so every year we've been there that we've had a coding night and the children are learning how to code using their computers and it's part of their STEM class, okay?
Now, I understand that she was not, she, uh, was not expecting this award.
She was not. She was not, we had applied, but you know, you apply like a year in advance and she was very, very surprised when she got it, but you know, I wasn't because she's a fantastic teacher and, um, she's really done a lot with our STEM program, um, at Albert Harris. Unfortunately, she had been out for about twelve weeks because she had hip replacement, but she is back and the children were using their computers today and she's ready to move forward, um, with the coding program as well as her other programs that she has at our school. So, we will be having a coding night when we come back.
Thank you, I plan to meet there, I plan to meet there, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, do we wanna mention anything about robotics this weekend?
Um, do we have somebody in, Julie, we could speak to it.
Well, it looks like we have a question.
Yes.
Awards and recognition, so I know it's not on there, but let's have something.
Um, good afternoon, I'm Tammy Allen, uh, coordinator for math, chemistry, science. Um, we had a wonderful tournament this weekend, the kids, the families, everybody had a really good time. We were blessed to take four teams with us to the state tournament this year. Three in Division One, one in Division Two. Uh, the Tree Huggers won, um, for core values, first place. Um, there were fifty-seven teams that they were competing against. Um, Division, Division Two, um, who, Miss Lance? Absolute Zero is their team, um, they were awarded first place for innovation project. So, we had a wonderful weekend, the kids love this, it's a great program. Um, I could sing phrases for the next twenty minutes about it. Um, public speaking's involved, math, science, problem solving for the community. They recently presented, uh, the Tree Huggers to, uh, the board, city board, council, and so they're trying to get a project up and going in the city, so wonderful.
What's the next step?
Um, the next step is we may be invited to an international company, we're not sure yet. We'll know by the end of the week, but, um, until then, for the next season, so.
Okay.
We'll be prepping for next year.
Well, we're really excited, especially because our young people, unlike other districts, closer, they all get an opportunity even in, in K, um, that's a bottom, uh, schools, K three two, wherever, to, to, to participate in this. And so many schools have, have gatekeeping and only certain young people get a chance to, to code or be a part of it or whatever. But now the vision, also you can go to Quinby and you'll see the kids, uh, dealing with things that will eventually come up to using robotics. And that's what I love, every student gets a chance to do it. And that's what it's all about to me, because out there may be some young person undiscovered who, who may be actually very good in it. And so I wanna take the teachers for a line, everyone to touch it. Uh, starting even with our young people, uh, K two, uh, we really appreciate what you're doing, we're very proud. It's one of the best in the state, you compete against fifty-seven other teams and you, you come out with first place wins. It's just wonderful.
We're extremely, extremely proud for them.
Very proud.
Congratulations to everyone, thank you. All right, moving on to the information agenda. Uh, in November, the school board attended, we were last with you all, we mentioned that we were going to our school board conference. We were all able to attend either virtually or in person and so we're gonna each do a little reporting out about what we learned and so forth and so on. Anybody wanna jump in here and start? Mr. Wade.
Oh, our leader should start.
Okay.
Fearlessly.
Fearlessly. Um, we have different breakout sessions we can attend and so this year, uh, two of the ones I wanted to focus on were building the teacher pipeline and Here to Help Student Mental Health and that one was, um, a, not a total repeat of what they shared last year, but it was from Portsmouth City Schools. They had done a fantastic job and started before COVID and trying to reach out and do things for mental health, but they were able to continue during COVID. They have got, uh, one person who was a former counselor that they have created a position that her job is just to keep everything straight with making sure that mental health and everybody's getting the needs they, and they need, whether it's the teachers, students, any support staff. They have a hotline just for their, their students that they serve. And so they were going through the, the ins and outs of how they made that happen, how they put it all together and how they reach out and, and how often is used. And so it was nice to hear that it's still there, that it's growing. They've offered, anybody wants to come and visit what they do and see it in person and see it in action, I think that's important for us to get out there, it's a reminder constantly that we need more counselors, that we need more school psychologists. We need those people in, in our schools and being there. And not just for the students, I think one of the things that, um, Ms. Hines' program with the, the kennel at the middle school where the teachers have a timeout area, I think it's important, you know, when I was a teacher, you always had your teacher lounge, you know, and you could go in there and you could vent and talk, whatever, and then midway through my teaching career, they're like, oh, you don't wanna go in there, it looks bad, you know, blah, blah. And, you know, and, and since, then it became a workroom and people were in there working and we'd have kids and, but you need that time to just be adults and be away from some of it. But you also need, the, the kids need that time too, and we just need to remember that they need that. The teacher pipeline was very interesting. Um, that was done by the State Department through George Mason and they had the Dean of Education come in and talk and so she was very interested. And she was talking about how important it is to kinda homegrown teachers, that you're having trouble with the teacher shortage and what can we do to, to change it and see what we can do. And she recommended that you, if you see students who go off to college from your area who say they wanna be teachers, then kinda invest in them, reach out and have a program through the high school, through your counselors to go back and say, oh, we understand that this is what you were interested in. Are you still, are you pursuing that? And encourage them to come back home by being a part of their education. You know, and just reach out per semester or whatever, and they've done that and George Mason is helping Northern Virginia do that with a lot of the schools. And they're finding they can get those, those folks then interested in going back to their own schools and bringing back to their own community. Which is something we have talked about in other school board meetings, as well at Gov, as at Governor's School where we talked about, if we could bring those folks back, that would make a difference. But they had several programs of the ways they're trying to go in and get high school students more interested in maybe going into education. And they're trying to work with Fairfax County, or Fairfax City, I guess it's city and county, and working with getting those students if they want to, maybe think about that, they're working little internships where they can go in the classroom as senior in high school and go back and of course they're pushing them towards elementary first so that there's enough of the age difference so that, that folks will show respect and whatever. And letting them go in and be mentors, but then through that mentoring, they're also finding that they've got people then to go, oh, well, maybe I'd like to do this as a career. So, it, it was very interesting, she gave us all of her information that we can reach out and she was, she was actually very motivating and very positive, so that's, which they all were, don't get me wrong, but I thought that was very motivating and positive. So those were the two that I wanted to report on, but the whole, our speakers were wonderful. It was very, that was all very motivating.
To have the governor's support, being there was a big, I think a big plus. To, to our surprise speaker was the governor, but it was really nice to have him in.
Well, and he was trying to touch back on, you know, I guess, trying to make sure that we all understood that he was trying to help out why the budget had been delayed so much and stuff. Okay, Mr. Wade, who's next?
My, my, I was, I'm not gonna say surprised by this, but I was, I grew a lot as far as the budgeting and finances. Um, I found it to be very interesting, I mean, I know budgets, finances, they're all complicated, but the way they delved into it really opened my eyes to it. It's not, it's not like you can just go in and throw this money here and throw money there. Uh, I found it to be very interesting the way they, um, they came about the budgeting and finances. Um, one of the other ones, what was the young lady's name, the, the book signing?
I'm the World War.
That's, I can't remember her name.
Catherine.
She had a very.
Just like when I teach, you get one name, Catherine.
Anyway, this lady, she, she's an attorney and she was, she was very interesting, she told her life story on how her grandmother, the grandmother raised her and, um, they told her she wouldn't be anything, she turned out to be one of the top attorneys in her area. And, uh, I, I just think it's awesome, you could, you can do anything. And she made it, you knew that she came from absolutely nothing to being one of the top attorneys in her area.
She told the fact that she's one of nine, eight or nine children?
Yeah, yeah, nine of them.
That all of her siblings have different fathers, they all have the same mother.
Yeah.
That when she was two or three, that she was taken and put into foster care. Her grandmother had to work to get her back, but could not get all the others back. And about all the abuse that she had suffered mentally as well as physically and sexually in the home by siblings and so forth. And it was one teacher in first grade who caught her and just changed her life and made her feel worthy and she said, she figured out if she did what the person wanted and gave them what they wanted, she got a sticker. And that made her feel valued. And then the sticker grew to, oh, I got a pencil. And it made you remember how much those little things mean to students and for some people that's all they have. And she is, like Mike said, she is an attorney, she is the top of her field. She's written this book, we were all crying, I'm trying not to, I mean, I, it was, you know, Zed made fun and said, there goes your vibe, start propping. It is what it is, it, it, but it was very heartwarming and she signed the books afterwards and, it, you know.
It just goes to show that our kids can be or do anything they want.
Well, one teacher can make a difference.
One teacher can make a difference.
And if you wanna Google her, it's just Leah Timmley. We have copies.
I have them looking.
I have them looking. For my notes. For my special laptop like him. Uh, but yes, she, she was, um, just very motivating, she, um, and, and a powerful story. But we have copies of that book for everybody, so if you need to, if you need to get your copy from me, I, I still have it.
Cody?
So, I, I, there's a lot of things, but one, this is my first time doing this, it was a, a very overwhelming of information. Uh, but I, but they, they hit on pretty much everything, the budget was part of my focus and actually had a separate meeting so I could understand how, what they were saying about describing the budget correlates to our budget and having it with Travis and he kinda went through line by line of kinda how that works. And that was really eye-opening, that, like, like you said, it's not just, you can't just pull a trigger, right? Something changed, there's a lot of factors involved in that and, uh, that was my main focus on.
Ms. Blackwell? Um, the two sessions that I went to, first, the whole conference was great, I mean, I shared a lot of great laughs with everybody, um. That's true. So the two that I went to, of course, was, um, the mental health one and then the budget finance as well. I learned a lot also, um, it was more interesting to me, the budget and finance, because it did let you know that it's not just something that's just thrown together that are actually a lot of pieces, supposedly that actually goes to this and this and whatever and then this is, it went through, um, the order of who reports to who and how their budget and how, what they actually have to look forward to. So, it lets me know that there is a lot of work that, to be done and I'm ready to start learning, so it was a, it was a good experience.
Dr. Tally?
Okay, um, everyone's hit some of the major spots, but, uh, I went to also the Early Bird, uh, which was great because we talked about collaboration between school boards, the local government. How can you build schools, how do you get money? And everyone in this room knows, a lot of times we have a lot of ideas, but we do not have the income or the funds to get it. And I was glad to see the article come out that the General Assembly is actually debating giving every locale the, the ability to do a one percent tax and I forward to that to you guys, because Kelly forwarded that to me this morning. And so I think that's gonna be the trend, education is gonna be funded in part by a single, uh, different, uh, strategy or way and it's helped a lot, like the school that they're building in Halifax County, uh, it's coming from a tax, uh, and it's not a property tax where people's taxes go up, it's a, it's a, uh, consumer tax, uh, for like buying cigarettes or whatever. And, uh, locales are really doing it and so we have several building projects across the state. It was very unique when they talked about the history of how they got that going in the community, because you know, for a politician, you say taxes is a death sentence, because nobody wants to run on that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna raise your taxes. But, uh, the guy actually started in Halifax County by showing people that they could get around, uh, raising property taxes, but have politicians do it, because young people deserve those building buildings that don't leak and, and teachers, uh, and that need sidewalks and parking lots and things of this nature. And I think the research shows that, uh, when schools are in good shape and I'm very thankful for our custodial staff and we've all done some tours, uh, they do as best as they can, but many of our buildings are fifty years old. And you think about your house being that old. So, uh, they talk about strategies of getting partnerships with locales and also, uh, capturing grants and it's very interesting Travis tonight, we meet, uh, with Ms. Rita House, Mrs. Manager, who has great insight into building in schools, uh, tomorrow. And we'll be talking about that, so I went, I went to that one and of course, one of this, only that, that you guys, everybody was crying about. Uh, David Jerk, uh, who talked about, you know, how important students are, um, and that they're the most important part of our day and how much we're the most important part of their day. Um, I also went to budget and finance, because I thought that was interesting too, uh, to look at the new systematic ways some divisions are coming up with creative way to fund programs that are needed, from mental health, so I think, because COVID goes away this year. Elsa funds, uh, are actually going away and we, we're gonna build every division, because you're talking about millions of dollars, it's gonna build that in a great way, uh, because those dollars have to be replaced, um, they have to be replaced in some way. And, uh, also, uh, sat in on Bay Corp, which ensures us, that is our insurance company, and, and talked about again, the way that we can make sure the schools are safe, uh, that, uh, employees are covered in, in terms of accidents and things of that nature. It was interesting to look at that side of it, because we're on the consumer side. Uh, but they had representatives there and they really talked about, uh, litigations and things to look for and to be preventive in nature, so it was just, uh, it was one of the best I've ever attended. Uh, it was just a great conference.
It was, I agree.
All right, um, the after-school programs presentation summary from your conference.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, we are from Patrick Henry Elementary School and I'm Ashley Taylor, the instructional coordinator.
I'm Erica Becker, music teacher at both Patrick Henry and Albert Harris.
I'm Liz Lynch, student teacher.
Lizzie Fulcher, fourth grade teacher.
Um, and our presentation really focused and showcased how Patrick Henry Elementary School leverages theme-based, extra-curricular curricular activities to promote critical thinking, inquiry, while developing the, all the soft skills that employees are looking for, um, communication, working together, collaboration, the five Cs. Um, and we actually presented this at VAST, which is the Virginia Association of Science Teachers, as well as at the SCV.
So we're gonna talk a little bit about other clubs, um, that we have after, um, school.
So as we discussed earlier, we have First Lady League Robotics, which is, has been in Martinsville City for a long time. It's one of our foundations, I think, with STEM for sure. Um, it promotes critical thinking, um, communication skills, you know, all the five Cs that, that, uh, collaboration, creativity, all of the things that, um, you know, students will need to be successful in their lives. And in our presentation, we, we got quite emotional talking about the impact that robotics and the others, but specifically robotics for me, Ms. Lynch, Ms. Taylor, um, we've been in that for a long time and the impact that it has on the, on our kids. You know, like this weekend we took them to Harrisonburg to JMU to experience the state tournament and they are able to be with, gosh, thousands of kids from all over the state of Virginia. They're able to see Virginia, I mean, uh, JMU and experience eating in the dining hall and going to the different places on campus or eating out at the Wood Grill Buffet, which is their favorite thing. Um, all of those experiences are just, you know, irreplaceable that we are able to take our students to experience those things. So First Lady League is, is such a, um, fabulous program that we have and that we are able to offer our students. So at Patrick Henry, you know, we start with fourth and fifth grade students, um, they're able to participate in robotics. And even prior to that, we have some Junior League Robotics for the, um, the little kids. And even prior to that, we have some junior league robotics for the, um, the little kids to be able to get some experience with Legos and building and coding to get some foundational skills and then they'll go to be on a competition team. This year we had, how many total teams?
Four.
Four total teams at Patrick Henry. Um, at Patrick Henry? Forty students this year that were involved in robotics at Patrick Henry. Um, you know, and it's, it's a lot of work, we practice, um, two days a week at least.
Minimum.
Um, at minimum. And then the students have the opportunity to move on, um, to the Division Two, like Ms. Ellen was discussing earlier, for like Absolute Zero, that it goes up through eighth grade, so, um, and then hopefully they can continue on robotics in some form, um, in the high school level. And then, one thing that we mentioned, um, not specifically to Patrick Henry, but some of these students started at Patrick Henry and are now graduates and, you know, like, what, eight of our kids in, on previous teams are now either enrolled in engineering programs or are enrolling in engineering programs. And I truly believe that that comes from the experience that they've had, yes, it was, well, yours was my baby's too. The, the experience that they've had in robotics and, and that we are able to offer that to them in elementary school and throughout. So I appreciate Martinsville City for giving us that, that, you know, so that we can leverage that opportunity for our students, because it's very valuable. And girls, and STEM, that's another.
They were talking about how girls don't do robotics in most places, in my high school, like it's down to four percent. And I was like, that's not our problem.
You have lots of girls involved. And, and a lot of times I will say too, you know, we're, a lot of times, they're, they're, the public school, schools that are at these competitions is very, very minimal.
Yeah, lots of private.
Lots of private, lots of community teams, lots of brothers and sister teams, I mean, anybody can be, can formulate a team. So for us to come back with a state championship in a category is, is, speaks for itself.
Two, two.
Two, well, I know, I was talking about elementary. Two, yes.
We're, we're very, very proud, I think.
We're so proud.
Seeing the different teams and how inclusive we are, you know, bringing them. And, um, it was really cool to see our kids interacting with others and being able to speak so kindly. And we had JMU professors and, um, other people commenting on that. So, you know, we take them out and, um, we're just really proud of them.
I want to add one thing, the core values award that, that the elementary school team. One, I think that is one of the most prestigious awards to win, because that's talking about the, how they're kind, how they're helpful, how they're respectful, how, you know, all of those core values that we have, you know, here and we expect for our students. They showed that in a way, I mean, they were coming, the head people were coming up to us throughout the next day saying how impressed they were with our students and how kind and helpful and, you know, excited. And just the vibe that they had was, was so positive. So that's, I think that's, that's really cool that we won that.
Especially because it's, it's a competition, you know, and we do love to win. Just because, and we, we like winning, but we also love helping others. So, um, even the teams within the school, they guide and give feedback to others and, you know, it's, it's collaborative effort.
Invertically too. Um, our middle school kids have, um, listened to all of the elementary school presentations. And then we have some former high school kids who are original members of Absolute Zero, two were official mentors. But even more came back to help with the tournament and just be part of it. They just want to make this program as good as it was for them. And that speaks a lot, I was really almost tearing up at the, at the regional tournament, because we had so many of our high schoolers there.
So, and I think that's what, um, sort of sparked, you know, we, we saw and know that the impact that that can have. The relationships that you can have with other students, you know, there are, you know, she has students that aren't her classroom students, but now, you know, have a different relationship with them. And so we know the power of, of a relationship. And so we thought, you know, what else can we do to offer relationships to other kids, to different adults? So that's what sparked the rest, the others, you know.
I'm gonna hit Odyssey real quick.
Yeah.
All right, so Odyssey is my passion, I, I love robotics, but Odyssey is just so much fun and it's also impossible to explain. Because every year it has a new challenge. And they have to be able to create a script, they have to create all the costumes, they have to do it with using a two hundred and, two hundred dollar or less budget, including everything they're wearing to their bodies. Um, they have to be able to do an instant challenge that nobody can prepare them for. Um, and Martinsville City has been very successful. Um, one of the teams last year just went to Worlds in person and the year before that, a team went to Worlds and placed third. Um, China and Russia beat us. Um, but what was really cool about it was the way it changes the way kids think and problem solve. They see things from all different angles and different perspectives. And when you see a fourth or fifth grader do that, that's just blows your mind, that they can see multiple perspectives and think about things and break things down.
Uh, the next is art club, so we have a junior art club and, um, an upper grade art club. And our art teacher is very passionate about art, so she has them after school and they get to do, um, more in-depth projects. Um, another thing that we, um, started last year was Youth in Motion, which is, um, oh, thank you. Which is, um, sponsored by and put on, really the curriculum's given to us by the YMCA. So that's a good community partnership we have. Um, we had our, um, they, they ran throughout the week, they practiced, they did things, but they also talked about mental health and how to improve that and also how to be healthy. And so at the end, they ran a five K together, which was cool.
Okay, so next we have our STEP team. Um, and STEP team is two years in the making and it is basically a, um, performance-based body percussion, very similar to what you would see on, um, college campuses by way of Black Greek-Letter organizations. And so, um, what, uh, we have our core values, which are based on, um, service, because, um, we want the kids to understand the importance of giving back to their communities. So, um, partnering with, um, moving forward, we would like to partner with organizations in the community to help build, um, their service awareness. Um, we also, um, focus on excellence, which is making sure the kids are holding themselves accountable for any type of activity that they're partaking in, so excellence. And then we have academics, um, we push their academics in the classroom, also, um, leadership and discipline. Um, so we're making sure that, um, not so much the students that are already leaders, but we want to develop leaders in our students, um, and develop those skills. And then, um, focusing on self-discipline, uh, making sure, you know, that they understand that they control themselves, they control their bodies, they control their miles, they, you know, so self-discipline and the importance of that and how that's gonna build them as individuals. Um, so that is our STEP team. And then, uh, we were also, um, moving forward, we were gonna branch off into, um, career and college readiness, um, uh, giving them opportunities to, uh, explore college campuses and, um, interact with, uh, fraternities and sororities on those campuses to see what that experience is like as well.
Um, next we have KidWind and this is a fairly new, um, after-school activity that we have joined or become a part of. And it's, um, again, using the engineering process and the students are able to, they're either creating wind energy or solar energy. And so there's different teams for each category, but in this, uh, little picture that you see, they were, uh, competing at the museum for their wind energy and they create everything, they create their, uh, blades out of whatever they want to be, it could be out of cardboard, it could be out of wood, it could be out of plastic, anything. So they, water bottles, I mean, we've seen all kinds of things. So, um, then they go and they, uh, there's a wind tunnel that they test their, um, their blades in, they have to be, they have to use,
Protractor.
The protractor, to determine the, um, sorry, whatever it is.
One of those.
Um, to determine the angles of the blades and so they can test it out. And then if it doesn't work and the speeds are slow, if it's too heavy or they have too many blades or too little blades, there's a lot of problem solving that they do with that. And then the, uh, solar one, we had a team compete last year, they did really well, um, they created a, demonstrated a, a building.
Solar schoolhouse.
Yeah, and so they, they were able to design all of that, but then explain and how they utilize the solar power to, um, run the building. So it's a really cool program that really promotes high-level thinking, because I did it for the first time last year and I'm still learning a lot, so it's way up there and it's, but it's really cool, it's a lot of fun.
The entrepreneur club started in the summer, you all might remember our store that we had and we had all of the goods and those kids worked the store. And so, um, they kept asking and asking, you know, can we do some more of that? So, um, last year we started a maker club and that's where we just created different things. A lot of it, um, was led by student interest, you know, they wanted to make jewelry. So we hung out after school and made jewelry together and also just had a really good time making new friends and, um, building some really good bonds.
Um, our engineering club is our team that competes in roller coaster design, um, as well as other engineering tasks that we do. Um, we go to King's Dominion and we get to ride roller coasters so that we can, some of our kids have never been to amusement park. So they've never actually seen it other than on YouTube. Uh, but that helps in future years to prepare them for building those. But they learn a ton about how, about how energy works, how energy can't be created or destroyed, kinetic versus potential, G-force, there's all kinds of things, and they have to research different parts on the rubric. Um, Patrick Henry's always been very well in those competitions, um, as well as Alvin Harris. Um, and it's just a blast and it's just a way to see, I mean, STEM in action, that is what you can do with STEM and STEAM. Um, the other cool thing is not every student can make a lot of money or being a sports star and stuff, but in almost all of these fields, you're gonna be making in the six figures when you graduate. If you go into roller coaster design or wind design or turbine design and stuff like that. So I think it's really neat that they can see the jobs that are just starting.
And lastly, we have our Performing Arts Academy. Um, of course, Performing Arts Academy is actually district-wide for grades three to three twelve. Um, but we had to acknowledge, um, how our kids benefits from, benefit from it. Uh, with Performing Arts Academy, um, right now we have maybe fifty-plus students involved. And, um, we focus on reading, developing reading, writing, math skills, um, oratorical skills, as well as career and college readiness. Um, so, um, uh, and we do all that by way of, um, theatrical performances. And so along with all of that, along with them actually putting on the shows, our students are also designing the sets. Um, our students have written commercials, they have designed props for doctor's offices and things of that sort. So, um, it's, we're teaching the entire child and so by way of, um, theater. So we definitely wanted to acknowledge how that also affects our children.
So we talked about how this sort of came about, um, and we start with a Google survey for our kids. So it's really kid-driven and, you know, we have some established clubs that we know, you know, they're going to be involved in, but, um, we also give them the chance to give some feedback of, you know, is there something you might like to, to do after school? Um, and then we have, um, you know, one question that was asked a lot at, um, both of our sessions actually is, how do you find the teachers that want to do this? You know, how do you have people that want to stay after school for something else, extra? And, um, I think, you know, we talked a lot about how this impacted the climate and, um, the culture of, for the kids, but it's really impacted the teachers, because we, we love to be there, we want to be at school. And so if you want to be there.
We live there.
We live there, we do really live there, you might come by, you know, and the cars are all still there. But, um, this, this was driven a lot by passions of teachers too. So I like, I like to create things, so I wanted to do the entrepreneur club and we had the support of Ms. Cooper and, um, of all of you and it, that's really cool. Um, same with, you know, we talked about with forming arts in the STEM, that was driven by some passions. So if you have a passion project, you want to do more and if we can share our passions with the kids and give them more, um, opportunities and, um, thanks to that has been really cool. So, um, the kids get to pick what they're interested in, the teachers get to sort of create some, have some idea in that too. And then we all meet together, because, you know, you might have a kid who's picked everything, they want to do everything. So the, the team of, um, coaches and teachers meet together to make sure that every child has an opportunity. And also, you know, we know the kids pretty, very well. And so we can say, you know, I think that this would be a good direction for them to go. Um, so we also, you know, they might need something, um, and so we, we do that too. So that, that's how our teams are all sort of devised. So we, we do have a dream to add more clubs, um, and that also is driven by passion. So we've already had people now that are like, well, we would love to do gardening or etiquette or, um, outdoor exploration. We have people that like to be outdoors, um, board games. And that's, you know, simple ideas, but it, it creates, um, um, relationships and just like the family atmosphere of we all just want to be together all the time. So, um, kids included, they, they like to be there.
And as a positive result out of all of the clubs, it has helped increase our attendance, it has helped increase our positive behavior. You know, students are excited to be there, they want to, they don't want to miss school because we have robotics today or we have art club today. You know, they're super excited to be there and that has really, that's part of our, our mission, you know, is to, to get kids there and make them want to be there while experiencing them. So that has really, um, helped a lot.
We had graphed our attendance data from last year and what we thought was really interesting is right before the club started in full swing and right when we stopped the fall and we're gonna get to the spring, we had spikes in attendance issues, which I thought was neat, because they were waiting for the club and once you two hours in the gathering, we're back down.
And so after sharing, I think it's important to, to share with you that we had people from all over the state for each conference. And, um, our first conference at VAST, we had people crying with us. And they, after, they thought, you know, they came from very big, um, districts and they said, and I have family still at home in Richmond and they always say, I can't believe that you all have all of this, how do you have all of this? And so we are very fortunate here in Martinsville for you all to support this as well, um, and for Ms. Cooper to support this and to have the families that support us too, um, the bus garage that provides transportation. Um, but we're just very, very grateful and I think all the feedback we got, well, um, a lot of jealous, you know, not jealous, jealousy, a little bit of, you know, we want to come there, we had a few people ask, are you hiring everybody? But thank you, so thank you for letting us be here. Tell you a little bit about what we did.
Thank you.
We want to thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
We're really appreciative of you guys, I mean, my, my daughter's involved in three or four of this program, maybe five or six. She's like, never comes home to go to school. Uh, so, uh, so I really appreciate you guys and all you all do, you all do a really good job.
We are fortunate to have you guys. I mean, our kids, I know my grandson, that's why we talk to him. You know, if he thought he couldn't make it to, to, to practice or any, any of that, I mean, he'd lose his mind. And I mean, I just, I just admire you guys and I thank you so much for the time, you know, you spend with these kids. Dr. Towne, I was talking about, I said, well, the kids, the kids really love this and I think the kids are, I think you guys are the same. I mean, you all are putting into them, you know. What we can't do at home, you guys are, you know, planting that seed and it's going, it's, it all, it's all gonna pay off in the long.
It's gonna make a difference.
You create a culture where you not only enjoy it, they enjoy it, everybody is enjoying it, it's not one side and nothing, that's, that's great, it's awesome.
I'm curious, I mean, what percentage of teachers ride roller coasters?
Well, we had, we had to say. Let me say, coaching that team, you, you have to know that's our end goal, our culminating project, so if you sign up to, a lot of pressure from the kids.
Yeah, I'm running, I'm running everywhere, you know, it's just wonderful that you, you said something, because once you see Keith there and Chad, hundreds of, of people there, you walk in the door and the first thing that, uh, the, the people who are in charge go and say, yeah, just the best, well-behaved, knowledgeable students here, I'm just glad you came to this, which is so good. And so that's, that's everywhere and, uh, it's because you guys are teaching that long with.
And we had several compliments about the behavior and the kindness of our kids from this weekend, from. Uh, they were, it was at JMU, so, you know, there were thousands of kids, so there was trash everywhere. We were not with them, no, they were at their pit, running the pit and the head, the director of the FLL tournament asked the room to help clean up, would they help clean up trash? And Absolute Zero was the first team right there to say, we got it. And so she came and told us, Caitlin came and told us about that and I was, you know, that's, that's just, you know, that's really.
That's who they are.
Yeah, they are.
That's who they are, so it's lovely.
Thank you for, thank you, slow mo.
I want to appreciate, I mean, I want to thank all of y'all for everything. With mine being high school graduates, they grew up with you and they did Minds in Motion, they were with you in choir, so like, mine, I think, makes you do engineering now too. So I appreciate, I mean, everything, all y'all's hard work and dedication that y'all have, thank you. So I appreciate, I mean, everything, all y'all's hard work and dedication that y'all have. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Um, I need to have a, I would like to make the motion that we, and I need someone to make the motion, I'm going to start it again. I'm going to struggle on here. Um, consent for the minutes from the last meeting, it says from December of, but it should be from the November.
Yeah.
Meeting. And also we need to approve the financial report that was presented this, for this meeting. So do I have a motion to, for the minutes of the last meeting and then the financial report that was presented for this meeting?
Absolutely.
I need a second. All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, superintendent's report.
Thank you, uh, students. Uh, we did have a chance to have a first look at our data, uh, for the upcoming year. A lot of surprises, a lot, we saw a lot of good things and a lot of errors that, um, we need to work on. And, uh, that's what, what it's about, you know. You have to look at your data realistically and, um, we sometimes say face the brutal facts of where we need improvement. So I want to thank all of our leads for preparing those. We spent about two, a couple of hours on it, uh, just with the DLT group. And, uh, again, um, I really thank you for all the testing, the assessments and things of that nature. Of course, we attended the VSBA and we, you've heard the report from there, that was just, again, marvelous. One, I'm thankful, some thankful for all the young people who participated in the Christmas parade. It looked very nice and I've made a great representation for our city, our schools. Our city manager, Ms. Benítez, she's meeting with Travis and I tomorrow. And she's also, uh, meeting with us twice a month. We work very hard on the budget. One thing, the cabinet, we've been in for about a week, probably going to drive each other crazy. But, uh, trying to, to get the budget, one thing, all the principals and your staff and parents and everyone who had input into your budget. And again, we'll be meeting with the budget committee Thursday at, uh, four o'clock. Uh, very thankful for the Harvest Community Dinner, Thanksgiving Dinner. Uh, we try to work that every year and just, just be a part of that and it was just very successful. Never seen so much food in my life, uh, which is great. Uh, and, uh, also with the young people who worked it, uh, it was good to see some alumni as well as, uh, some of our current students working and some parents who volunteered their children to work, which I thought was funny. While here, mom, dad told me I had to work today and I think it's great. It's always good giving, uh, to someone. Uh, Abbott and San Diego, just a great trip. People still talking about our Baltimore experience. Uh, met many people and, um, you'd be very pleased to talk about Abbott and our psych schools. And they remember all that from Baltimore still, uh, and San Diego. And, uh, are planning to again come this way. Uh, planning on getting a group of four superintendents together and probably have something at the, the Milisco, which is one of the few schools in the state, I think is the only one, two now, uh, that is a, I have a psych school. Uh, Teachers of Year, we're excited by our representation. Um, I feel like we, the committee's going to have a very hard and difficult job, uh, because so many of them are so great at what they do. Um, we've had, uh, again, uh, city council work session, I went to that. Uh, was a part of that work session on Saturday for a couple of hours. And, uh, had a chance to really look at the, and the workings of what they're trying to do. And so many things that are coming down the pipeline. Uh, Mayor, of course, attends a lot of our activities and was with them Friday night. And, uh, looking forward to, uh, having a joint meeting with them to talk about that budget and, and the plans to go forward, uh, in terms of next year. Um, also, uh, had an opportunity to, to walk through a lot of the classes. You know, I love the teaching that I'm seeing, uh, right now. And, uh, we're, we're looking forward to, as we count on Christmas, we know that the students are restless. We know the staff members are restless. It's always that way before holiday. Uh, we want to keep the main thing, the main thing, which is educating our young people, which is the most important thing we do. And as we get ready for the, the Christmas holiday and, and for a break, uh, to come back. And so again, uh, everyone's on, on target, um, and, uh, we're very pleased for what we're seeing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matters from the board. Mr. Williamson. Mr. Williams. You all need to divide this up. Cody, do you have anything for us? Ms. Blackwell, I should have started with the lady first. That would have helped it flow a little bit.
Okay, um, I just have a couple of things that I'd like to say. Uh, first of all, I went to, I noticed that on Facebook, so thank you, Callie, putting information out there regarding things for after-prom. And I believe it's this Saturday, this Dr. Dixon, am I that correct? That we're doing an after-prom activity to raise some money?
Yes, ma'am.
And he's excited. And I think it's some kind of pajama or something. So will you be wearing your pajamas?
No, we're not.
All right. Thought there was going to be entertainment there for all, everybody. Please do come out. It's so important that we help the after-prom committee and the parents raise funds for after-prom. That is such a huge activity. It's, it's very important for our kids and for the community. So please, anybody, and if you are not able to come out, if you would like to make a donation, it's the end of the year and I know how folks like to make a few donations. I know that after-prom could always use a few extra funds, so please think about that. Um, I'd like to say thank you to all the bus drivers, to all the teachers, to all the aides, to all the employees for the good job you're doing. And we know that they are restless and you're restless. And quite frankly, I hope, think the whole community's restless lately. Everybody seems to be on pins and needles. So just please remember kindness is free and please act with kindness whenever possible. Um, I do appreciate all the after-school activities that the teachers do. And I appreciate those who keep volunteering their time. And there's several other programs that we would love to see back in full force. And we'd love to see folks who would agree to volunteer and work. So please think about that, you know, over the holiday soul search and think about it, is there something you could give? We'd love to see the robotics program back to the high school. And if there's somebody that's, that's in their mind, think about it. Please come back and be willing to say that you'd love to help out with that because we need those things back. Um, I'm going to go into the reminder of dates. Again, we have our wonderful after-prom activity in our pajama jam, whatever that means. Not sure what that entails, but it's going to be great fun, right?
Yes.
And it's Saturday evening at six o'clock. We have band concerts. On Monday, the eighteenth, we have the high school band concert. And the nineteenth, we have the middle school band concert. The twenty-first, we have our three-hour early dismissal. I know everybody's going to be doing their happy dance with that. Cause the day before, if rumors are true, when you have thunder in December, then you're going to have snow ten days later. So, you know, hopefully that'll all kind of coincide together. Uh, winter break is going to be December twenty-second through January fifth. Staff returns Ja- January fourth and fifth with professional staff development days. The students come back Ju- uh, January eighth, I was about to say July, they'd really be excited. Uh, our next regular school board meeting will be on January eleventh, which is a Thursday. And we're doing that because Dr. Tally and Mr. Clemmons will be in Richmond. And so please join us that Thursday. And that will also be the first reading of the budget and that'll be presented to us. Then on January fifteenth, we have a school holiday for Martin Luther Puke Day. Any unregistered citizen comments?
Can I say something before we move forward?
Yes.
Um, I know that each of you have seen that, I don't know if you've seen it, like, the video that's been going around. That it, it disturbed me that a young man would punch a young lady in the face with no remorse. I know that there's nothing much that we could do at that point in time, but it really disturbed me to see him punch that look, I mean, that lady, I mean, the girl in the face. There was no call for it and I called Dr. Tally as soon as I saw it. And I know that our kids are better than this. I know that for a fact. I'm lost for words when it comes to stuff like that. It hurts me to my core that, to see that a boy that age punch a girl in the face is senseless. There's got to be something that weakened it to try and control these fights. Uh, I mean, I know I've, I've been out of school, I'm ancient, you know, but, hush. She just laughed right behind me. But anyway, to see a young man punch a girl in the face, I mean, to lay his hands on a period to harm her is, is detrimental to me. I mean, it's just, it tears me up to see that. We're going to have to do something. We're going to have to do something. I mean, it may sound rash, but to see something like that and to know that this is going on in, in our schools. And I'm not saying that it's only in our schools, but, you know, it's going to be fights. We all know that. But to see something like that is, is, is hard. I want to commend you all for what you do. I know we try to stop it, try to prevent it, but there's, there's, there are going to be fights. But we've got to get a grip on this. I don't know what it's going to take, but we've got to come to some kind of solution. I mean, that, like I said, it's going to be fights, I know that. But when I saw that, it, it really tore me up. So I just, I just had to get that off my chest.
The administrators have received, um, a memo of instructions of what we're going to do going forward. Uh, because of, you know, we don't want any violence, it doesn't matter. And no violence happens in school, public, private or wherever. Uh, but there has to be some repercussions, uh, there has to be some consequences. And, uh, that was released, it's also been posted, uh, the direction that we're going to go in that, certainly not to ignore it. Uh, but to do that along with some good counseling, to, to let people understand what it is that we stand for, safe schools. Just critical, critical. And, uh, we're, we're part of the use of social media. Cause I'm not so sure TJ and I have this conversation all the time, that things on social media make anything better because you have a lot of people copycat. Uh, it becomes a contest. Um, but again, uh, we just released a memo last week. And I, I think the administrators, the appropriate administrators especially at the secondary level, will follow through and do what we've asked. And we're real fortunate that we do have resource officers now in all of our schools for Clifford. And, uh, we're going to deal with those issues and, and to the stop. It's just that simple. Uh, there is no leeway there, there's no place for it. But, but thank you again for your comments.
My only comment would be we also have the policy about phones during the school day.
Absolutely.
And I feel very strongly and have told Dr. Tally several times and I've asked him to convey it to Mr. Slaughter, if you are caught videoing a fight, you need to be punished, point-blank. That's what our policy says and that's what should happen, whether you have a day about a school suspension or in-school suspension. You need to be punished because you are adding to the event.
Absolutely.
And students need to realize that and parents need to realize that. You send us the best you have and we want to keep the best you have safe during the day. And the best way to do that is to stop the silliness. And that certainly does not make anything any better. So moving on to communications, Ms. Smith, do we have anything?
No.
Okay. Then, uh, I'll move that we get a closed session. Oh, I've got to read stuff. Well, you read. Mr. Williamson. You read, turn the page. Teaching, teaching, one-on-one, here we go.
I'm all through though, now.
There you go.
Here we go, okay. Pursuant to section two-point-two, that's three-seven-one-one-A. Dakota, Dakota, Virginia, I move that the board convenes the closed session for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. Discussion and consideration of evaluation, employment, assignment and reassignment of employees of the Martinsville City Schools as authorized by section two-point-two, dash, three-seven-one-one-A, one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Second? Okay, all in favor? Merry Christmas.
Have a great, great.